All right, welcome to the work session. Village of Buzzenville Board of Trustees. Today is Monday, August 28th. First item on our agenda is a conversation with Mike Newman, Superintendent of Parks and Recreation. We have before us a memo from Mike about buying a new electric truck. You there, Mike?
I'm here. Hello.
Hi, Mike.
All right.
How's everybody?
Good. How are you? All right, so we have, we have the memo in the agenda. You propose to buy an electric Ford F-150?
Yes, it was a Ford Lightning. This would look to replace truck number 37, which is in pretty poor condition. Most of the undercarriage is rusting out, if not almost completely rusted out. So what this would do is we would replace 37 and take 48, which is currently being used in the wintertime to plow, which is Mario's truck. So we would not be affecting the winter, winter work. We'd still be able to use Mario's truck as a plow truck. That truck 48 would replace 37 and the Lightning would become the foreman truck going forward, which would be a perfectly fine truck for the foreman who is doing a little, you know, a little bit less of the heavy duty work and this truck wouldn't be used for plowing. The hope is to add to our electric fleet as we continue to move forward here. Talked with Mike Bornowski to make sure that we would be able to use the current electric station, charging station over at DPW. We would be able to. We don't think there would be any issue with rotating the cars that are currently being used on that charger. So what I'm hoping is to get the okay to, when they come available, to be able to proceed forward. I know currently one of our vendors does have some where we could piggyback off of a New York City contract. But I just don't know how long they're gonna be available, or even if they're still available. This was a couple of weeks ago where they informed us they had some 2023s. That price was about 62 and change. And then we're also looking and working with Alyssa to potentially get a NYSERDA grant for 10 grand that would go towards this electric vehicle.
So if there was a 2023 available, we could get it comparatively soon?
Yes.
Do we have any knowledge about whether there's any improvement in the 2024 model that would make it worth waiting for?
Nothing, nothing significant.
Different upholstery?
All right, well. And just one comment. We had on our capital schedule to replace this truck next fiscal year, so it's essentially moving it up into the current. It's likely to be a fun balance allocation.
Yeah, and the backstory on the grant is that we had allocated that money to a rebate program for smart thermostats and improvements tied to energy audits. And we heard back from NYSERDA that we weren't going to be able to do that now because of a new Con Edison smart thermostat program, basically conflicts with other existing rebate programs. And so I propose we put it to an electric vehicle and the timing is good with the, with the Parks Department's need, right? So I'm in favor personally.
I am too.
And then just a quick update on the EV front. We're moving forward with putting charging stations in the Wheeler Avenue lot, which would service our administrative lease vehicles.
Those would be staff only locations?
That's right. And we could also obviously use them for the parking enforcement car and the building department.
Which currently are down at DPW.
Correct. They charge at DPW as well, so provides us with more access.
All right. I think you have ratification of the plan, Mike Newman.
That sounds great. I will give you guys details as we move forward.
Tell Mario, he knows the deal.
Yeah, he's gonna be, he's gonna be a happy camper.
He promised me, you know, he's gonna stay another 50 years.
Yeah, I'm gonna hold him to that.
All right.
Yeah, we're showing him the love.
Yeah.
Not every community shows that kind of love, but we do.
Into the charter in the future.
Yeah. All right, thank you very much, Mike. Mike, 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 before you go.
Yep.
Can you just give us a, a quick end of the pool season, how it all went, sort of a report?
Yeah.
Yeah, pool, pool had another solid year. You know, without looking at the numbers, we were pretty much right where we were last year as far as membership. You know, we, we did increase fees, so I anticipate our revenue to be up on that. Besides that, it was a positive pool year, no major issues. I know we had one day where we had a little bit of an issue. We were able to correct that rather quickly and only have the pool closed for one day. We got it open the next day, which was great. We had a great year with staff, plenty of lifeguards this year. We didn't run into the similar problems we had last year. So all positive at the pool.
Great. And then not to keep you too long, but we're about to ramp into Panther Club and we have a raft of resolutions with people arriving and people departing. You're feeling pretty solid?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're working hard to get everybody on board with all the paperwork that needs to be done. But we're in a good spot with staff to start the year. Mindy and newest employee Dana have been working hard just to make sure everything's all set with paperwork and are making sure we meet our requirements for our license. We've been, they've had a couple of meetings with the school. Just talk about logistics and, you know, procedures. So all's going well on that front. I mean, we do have a waitlist for Panther Club currently and we'll work through that waitlist each month as there, as changes come up.
Hey, all right. Thank you, sir.
And that's, that's a waitlist with increased size or with the same size?
That is a, that is a waitlist with the increased size we made last year to 150 a day.
Wow.
All right. Also wanted to wish Mike good luck with the playground committee. I saw that you've made your choices in your meetings soon, right?
Yep, our first meeting off the top of my head, I want to say is the 12th, but don't hold me to that because I don't have it in front of me. But yeah, so we've got, got planned to have several meetings with them and most likely we'll bring in potentially the playground rep we're gonna use. He's, he's indicated that he'd be more than willing to come meet with the committee as well, so I think that'd be great too. And I'll keep you guys updated with our progress.
And who, who's on the playground committee?
I selected eight individuals. I can email you their names.
You don't have to tell me the names, just like, you know, so different people from the community?
Yeah, so, so what we did is we, we put it out to the community. I had about 40, 45 emails. You know, I basically asked like where they live, why they're interested. I read through the emails and made basically a little chart, kind of trying to make sure I took some people that were kind of representative of each playground and, you know, kids, well, how many kids they had or younger kids, older kids, any experience. We have a couple of people that indicated they've got some experience with playgrounds and, and companies. So I think I selected a good group that kind of had similar interests of the overall group.
That's great. That sounds excellent.
All right. Good job. Much appreciated, Mike. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Thanks, Mike.
Have a good one.
Right. All right.
Okay.
Sounds good. Discussion regarding Village Hall Capital Project led by Eric Morrissey. HVAC, that's his initial, it's gonna be after your name.
I've been spending a lot of time in the attic of this building, working on air handlers, controls. So as you may recall, a couple of years ago, we replaced the VRD compressor units outside. So those units were over, I think they were going on 30 years old. The HVAC system is comprised of compressors, lines, right, that go through the building and then come out what they call indoor heads, these indoor units. There's a more technical name to it, but they call them heads. Right now, the heads, I think about four of the nine on the first floor have malfunctioned. So they're not providing cooling to the lease department and building department. Those heads are all going on 30 years old. They're the same age as the compressors. We've got a couple of opinions that say, listen, if you're gonna replace the four that are malfunctioning, you might as well replace all nine. So we went out and got some pricing. They're going to be about $50,000 to do the replacement project on the first floor. Dakin is the, the company that we have our maintenance contract with. They provided us with a quote that's in that ballpark, a little less than $50,000. But based on our conversations with other contractors, even the building department that see pricing on this type of work, they think it's a fair and reasonable cost. So tonight, typically at that range, we would bid out a project of that nature. But given the fact that we're now operating without cool air and with winter breathing down our neck, we want to make sure that project gets done. So there's a resolution on tonight's agenda that declares it an emergency project because we are talking about areas that have servers and public safety.
So what's the status of the heads on floors two and three?
They're doing fine for now.
Are they also all original?
Yes. The issues we're running into on the second floor right now, similar situation. We have a carrier compressor that's going on 30 years old. The air handler that's located in the attic, we just had to replace the belt on. So these things are all reaching end of life.
So what, we spent quite a bit of money, I want to say 20 years ago, with the assistance of Burilli.
Correct.
That did not replace these items you referred to as being 30 years old?
No, when you said you did a quick.
Well, for example, you know, all these thermostats were put in in various places, the zones and da, da, da. That's certainly a good bit less than 30 years ago.
Right, but that's not speaking to the compressors.
That was just the control system.
Correct. Yeah. Correct. So on the third floor, we're dealing with some issues. They believe there may be a leak in some of the lines. So right now, Dakin was in Village Hall today, trying to identify where the leak is. It's not, we still have service on the third floor. But what ended up happening is we had to put about 50 pounds of refrigerant into the compressor midway through the summer because we didn't lose cooling there. So that indicated a leak somewhere in the system. They now have to evaluate, find that leak. So that's the new sun of the third floor. But on the first floor, that's what we're dealing with.
And what was the issue you had a month or so ago here on this floor?
So that was loose belt in the air compressor on the second floor was sending out a signal to the controller. And the controller was turning off the air, the air handler and the compressor, so.
Just a loose belt?
Yes.
See, I'm thinking if this keeps going on, Eric is gonna be able to fix it himself.
I'm telling you, I, yeah, I, I.
Yeah, I got a license.
Yes, exactly. Again, the air handler is located in the attic of this building. So Alyssa can attest that I've been spending a lot. They, they are actually accusing me of having a couch up there.
I think when he was missing, he was in the attic.
Since, since we're spending so much money on this, have we looked at any incentives or rebates for energy efficiency? As we, as we redo this?
Yeah, well, we get the boilers, needing to replace the boilers. That's where that conversation will come in play. Because the, the infrastructure we constructed is very energy, or the compressors that we're utilizing are very energy efficient. And then, you know, just speaking on kind of being proactive, we do have a building survey that we're working off of here. One of the things we're looking to do is get a design on the compressor and system that services the second floor. So we can be more proactive on, you know, bidding that project out and getting it replaced before we're being reactionary. So those are, so it's about $50,000 on the first floor to remediate that issue. Hopefully they find the leak on the third floor and that's an easier fix. More to come there. And then on the second floor, we're currently designing or will be designing replacement for the compressor and air handler.
And that number is likely to be?
Very hard to tell, likely in the hundreds of thousands. The air handler alone, just to be constructed in the attic, will be a bear. But yeah, I would say a couple hundred thousand to do that.
How's the basement? They have any issues down there?
No, I mean, that's where we have the boiler.
Should we call it the vault basement?
The basement, yeah, where, where the PD locker room is?
Exactly.
Um, that, that's, that's doing fine. That's on a different zone and that's, that's fine.
And unrelated to HVAC, wasn't there a conversation that the emergency generator might be?
Yep. We're talking internally about engaging, which engineering firm to engage on replacing that emergency generator?
So it takes a year to build?
That's.
There's no way to get it out in anywhere approaching one or even a few pieces, right?
One, one issue was just the lead time on these emergency generators are about a year. And then secondarily, actually, you know, building it, constructing it in the basement, basement of this building, given that the only access point is right here between the building and the train track. So, you know, I think we know the situation at the water treatment plant when their emergency generator went down, just getting a rental. To bridge the gap between the arrival of their, their new ones. So we definitely want to be proactive with that. We, we don't have any issues with it right now, but it is almost 20 years old. And that's about the, the lifetime on emergency generator. So that's coming down.
And the DPW one is a little younger than that, but not tremendously so.
Right, that one's a little bit, but that would be a more forgiving project?
Yeah, it's easy to get to, right?
Yeah.
Very easy to get to. That's a dream site.
Yeah, I mean, the emergency generator at the Cedar Center, which was just recently installed, was about $125,000, something like that. And that was, you know, installation and then creating all the necessary lines to the building. The in-con replacement at DPW is likely a little bit less than that, or at least in that ballpark. So.
It's always something.
Home ownership, right?
Yeah.
Village Hall ownership.
Exactly.
Right.
Thanks for your research.
Yes, no problem.
All right.
All consuming.
Loading zone marking regulations.
All right. So I know we've talked about beefing up our loading zone regulations. We have a draft local law that we're working on. So we don't have it on the agenda tonight to schedule a public hearing, but I wanted to get some input from the board. But first off, obviously, we talked down in front of 70 Memorial, another location that has come to mind is actually out in front of the Atwood. They, they have a, an area that's unmarked right up front of their entrance that's utilized by food delivery folks or people that are just parking for, to look, what to, you know, run something in the building. But we've heard that some, some folks would park out there a little bit longer than probably is just. So we may want to make that a loading zone. So we have some enforcement teeth there. And then the conversation turns to what is an adequate amount of time for a loading zone? You know, 15 minutes, 30 minutes? And wanted to put that to the board.
Is there a norm?
Yeah, so municipal code has it anywhere. Typically, it's either 15 minutes or 30 minutes from what our research shows. Obviously, it could be 15 minutes and we leave it up to the discretion of the, you know, parking enforcement officer. Somebody's been there 15 minutes, but you see that they're utilizing it as a loading zone. But egregious violations you write for, you know, there's some level of discretion. But wanted to put that out there.
And related but unrelated, at some point, it doesn't have to be right now, attached to this, we've got to revisit the question of the five minute parking on Wheeler Avenue, which is marked five minute parking, all hours, all days. And that is substantially at variance with the way it is being used. And for example, at night, it is simply being used as regular parking and generally without any time limits. And honestly, I'm not sure that that isn't perfectly reasonable. Right?
Right.
I mean, at the time that was done, used to be no parking on that side. There was significant concern that it would be too cramped for cars backing out of the diagonal spaces, especially past the curve where it's wider. Clearly, not that there haven't been some moments, there have, but it has generally worked okay. So I just think at some point we want to get to the circumstance where the signs actually align with what we really.
Is there a need for a short term parking, like?
Forcing.
I mean, should we, five minutes is maybe unrealistic. Do we need to have some of it be short term?
I mean, it, it, it's helpful, I think, if the whole thing is all the same. I will say, I, I frequently interact with the FedEx UPS guys who are delivering to offices and part of the idea was that that side of the street would be a place for them to park and also, you know, trucks, Cisco, you know, whatever, delivering to stores and all of that, you know. And I think that has mostly worked out okay. You know, those guys try not to come at lunchtime when it's really crowded, but clearly, I don't, I, speaking personally, I don't think five minutes is realistic. And we're not enforcing five minutes. And you go in to get a coffee, you could be easily in line more than five minutes. And honestly, I'm not sure all hours, all days makes any sense either.
Well, it doesn't make sense because we don't have an enforcement after 6:00 PM.
Right.
Just like the, what we changed in the old village, it doesn't have any teeth because it's never enforced. There either.
Yeah.
No, we have no, our parking enforcement officer doesn't ever go up there and the police don't enforce it. And the enforcement officer downtown is gone at six, right?
Her schedule varies and we're about to add a second person tonight.
Yes.
So our enforcement capability is going to grow and the chief tries to stagger their schedules to try to cover more of the day. You know, there are a lot of these things like five minute parking, all hours, all days was partly the hope that obviously some people will, will do what they will do, but that a significant number of people will respect that. I can tell you, years of experience, you see it all the time in the old village. The general attitude for a lot of people is if they can get away with it, they will.
Well, that's right. That's life, isn't it?
I mean, it's not always life, but I mean, it, it certainly is life in that context. So, you know, we can have a conversation with the chief about how he's gonna stagger it or services because we've only had one enforcement officer quite a long time. And that person is also called upon for some other duties they're going to explain. So.
I like the five minute sign because I think even if some people stay 10 minutes, that it sends a, it's such a short number that it sends a message. If you're new to town, you know, if you're, you're coming in for the first time and you're gonna have dinner or you're gonna even pick up takeout, that it sends a message like this.
I, I agree with that in concept, except that I don't think five minutes is enough. And, and I think the reality that it, I mean, at night, when the capacity drive down park quickly to get takeout, get it back in the car is important. Your capacity to do that is, is, is weak. So, and we had some complaints this week about why isn't, for example, the 15 minute parking at the post office free? And, and you know, the reality there is if it, if there isn't a parking meter that makes it easy to see whether a person is legally or illegally parked, it is significantly harder to enforce. And the driver says, this is gonna be hard to enforce. I got quite a bit of variance, but you know, I can, I can get away with it, so.
And it's hard, you know, we have a minute space on wheelers.
Right.
And it turns over.
Yeah, I mean, we're having, I was in and out of my office this, on, on Saturday, unloading various stuff back and forth, back and forth. And I can tell you that in the one hour handicapped space that's kind of in front of the, the Gordon Parks Gallery, the same car was there for six hours. In the handicap space, so.
Could we put a sign that's, instead of five minutes, it's like something like deliveries, drop offs and pickups only until 6:00 PM?
Sure. I mean, I think it's a conversation to have, like, well, what's the right thing to do, right?
You got the loading zone, you know, and the definition of a loading zone is.
But I feel like. A loading zone feels commercial to me.
It feels like a delivery, it feels like a truck, but it'd be, you know.
And then, you know, there is a question. You know, currently says all hours, all days. Obviously, at 10:00 at night, it's probably no harm, no foul, right? But at 8:00 at night or at 7:30 or certainly at 6:30 when people are trying to get grab it, or pick up the pizza, pick up takeout, whatever it might be, you know.
Yeah.
All right, so I didn't mean to derail the conversation, but it's related.
Absolutely. So more to come on the loading zone. If you were all okay with it, we'd stick to a 15 minute.
That seems reasonable.
Okay. And then I was also gonna touch on the 15 meter, minute meter parking space in front of the post office. So we'll keep it meters for now and if that.
I think we should keep it metered, yeah.
I mean, I think it has to be metered. Not that I wouldn't like it to be free.
Right.
It's just that if it isn't free, the chance of it being available is greater.
Right.
Yeah.
And then we do have a proposed local law on tonight's agenda. Nicole, I know this, I think was started with your outreach, the police department. But on Manville Road at Grady Lane, at the, at the intersection there, the crossing guard has advised that there are sightline issues. So Anthony, the chief and I went out there and identified an area to ignore parking during the drop off and dismissal times.
That's good.
And so we'll get that, hopefully that local law passed and get signed and shut up as soon as we can. So that's in place for the beginning of the school.
Right.
So we had various conversations with various developments, but the folks at 70 Memorial are, are believing that they may be leasing up and occupying October, November?
Yes, but the Cooley Street road would have to be done.
Correct. So there's some specific things that have to be achieved before that. So we had a conversation with them.
October, November, really?
Yeah, that's what they're thinking at law, so.
Yeah, okay.
Should we do our monthly, when do we get our sidewalk? And when do we get our pass-through question?
When will the path be open? So I think that probably is going to await the Cooley Street improvement.
Yeah.
Because you end up in a construction zone at the end.
Right.
I went there the other day.
It's open.
Yeah, it's just open.
You can walk up and you can walk down.
Yeah, I thought it was open.
I was like, well. Oh, my son, my son gave it a thumbs up. He's like, this is cool. And he said like a guy in the grass area. He's like, look, we can play soccer here. Small, but I'm like, you're right. I'm like, there's some grass here.
Like that.
Yeah.
So anyway, we're anxious to see the Cooley Street piece come to fruition. Bunch of things and there's a DOT issue and all of that.
Yeah, waiting on approval from the DOT for a tree going apartment there that the 70 Memorial has submitted for, so.
Is that moving forward?
Yeah, to the extent that you can tell.
Right. Yeah, the OP said an answer this week, but.
So I mean, the retail spaces look like there's been no activity.
Well, half the pharmacy is going to be taken.
No, no, I'm in 70 Memorial.
Oh, 70 Memorial. That, that, we asked that question and there is, they're, they are optimistic at this point that they have a tenant. They haven't identified that tenant, but.
Isn't it four, four spots?
I don't know whether this tenant would take more than one, so.
Wait, so half the pharmacies gonna be occupied already?
Half the pharmacies can be occupied by dentists. They've been through the process. They got a parking grace. There'll be a dentist that. Well, in, in a previous generation, you might have thought that's an odd use. This dentist apparently very much wants to be downtown in a storefront space. And as you will see, we're, have on the agenda to waive the waiting time for Crawdaddy's Preable Kitchen going in right down here where the, where the steakhouse was.
Yes, I, I do know that.
And then I forwarded you that good report that the diner has been sold to Ari Phanos, who has a substantial track record and who Stanford Diner is in. I fear it's show this, this month or whatever.
That's absolutely exciting.
Yeah, very exciting.
What about the bakery? Is there any news on that?
So it's funny, I, I've been waiting to see Barbara, who owns the building, it. So, it's funny, I I I've been waiting to see Barbara, who owns the building, and I've seen her lately, but. Uh, a bunch of people seem to have got the idea that Fleetwood Bakery is going to open in mid September. I don't know whether that's an urban myth or not. Uh, but there is chatter to that effect.
I think it was in the Journal of News, where the.
Was it?
Yeah, it was like that. It's like coming up or something and it was like new place, but exciting.
I mean, I was like, that's verified even by them, but.
So, that would be great, and uh al- also. Believe there may be positive news to report about the last remaining retail space at thirty nine Washington between the bank and the liquor store. Nothing to report yet, but. Sounds like good progress that may be uh pleasing to all. So, I'd say so- some of that stuff is is starting to move, Robert Hughes told me that. Uh, Silvman Realty, which owns the former pharmacy building is. Filed, have they or about to file for some renovations to the remaining half of the storefront? I think the dentist is taking the right hand side with the side that has the door in it, and obviously, so that requires. Some renovations on the left hand side, um, and Robert was not certain whether that is just. Taking action because now that space needs a door or whether they actually had a tenant and. Were working to accommodate that tenant, so hopefully it's the latter, but instead of the former, but.
I heard that some of the retail owners were saying that there's more foot traffic now with the Adwood being occupied as well.
That'd be great.
Hopefully with the Seven Memorial Plaza, that will be.
Yeah, I mean, I can I can say just anecdotally, I've encountered a couple of people. Who uh live in or know someone who lives in the Adwood and those folks seemed very happy to be there.
Yeah.
I encourage you to take a look, I mean.
How's the um, how's the car traffic in and out? We were concerned about the uh maybe striking off an X at that spot or.
You mean as you approach, Grant? So, to my knowledge, um, you know, car, you mean cars.
Thinking of the sawmill.
Approaching the sawmill, yeah.
So, uh, I obviously. I am past there with some regularity, I have literally not seen a problem there at all.
I haven't either.
I don't doubt that there are moments. I can tell you and, you know, Eric already mentioned, there's a discussion about how to manage the sort of. Quick in and out parking for Amazon and U P S and Grand Club and all that. And, you know, some of the neighbors across the street have raised questions about that, but I tell you, I I have been there quite a bit and. Uh, do not see any significant amount of in and out from the garage, obviously cars do go in and out, but I think. A a lot of people live there because of the adjacency to services and the training.
Yeah.
They have a car, but they are not using it in the same way somebody who lives farther away uses it, so. There was concern that that street might have to be turned one way and all of that, I I don't see that materializing, do you see any of that there?
No, um, you know, there there are, um, you know, keeping an eye on food delivery and congestion on that road. But it seems to be short stints, um, but certainly something we're keeping an eye on. When the uh building first opened, we had a piece detail funded by escrow from the developer, just keeping an eye on making sure people weren't leaving the left. They wrote a couple tickets, but really did not see an issue with that, so. But certainly, uh, we're keeping an eye on the traffic.
Well, of course, obviously, we're coming into September, school starts, people are back in and maybe a little more regularized schedule, we'll just have to see whether. You know, part of what we've been seeing is just been the summer doldrums, but.
Uh, not to change the subject, but um on that note, uh, we had a conversation with the traffic engineers that have been working on the. Uh, traffic analysis on Bedford Road, which is tied to the re-timing of the signals, so. Uh, we, the the mayor sat in on a quick presentation from them, so um, looks like they will be teed up with a final report. Uh, to present to the board, I believe he said, um, the second meeting in September.
And and for your evening reading pleasure, there are like four hundred pages of data.
Yeah.
Attached to the report, so, um, I think it's really, really, really interesting stuff. Uh, as we knew it, no, I I'm sorry, the first forty pages. The 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 first forty pages, the 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 backup. Is not for the faint of heart, but uh one interesting piece, which is a piece we knew anecdotally. Is that the pedestrian walk cycle, the four way stop right here in the corner in front of Village Hall. Uh, is uh seventy five percent of the time, there's no pedestrian. And so what's happening, i- i- and frequently that's because somebody hit the button. But had an opportunity to cross before the fifteen second cycle and all of that, so, I mean, wh- what it's doing. Is seventy five percent of the time, all traffic is stopped in all directions. To to benefit of no one, so it it's an interesting question about how to resolve that, because inevitably. You know, the answer to that, that idea was partly because it would improve the conditions for people. Because they could cross without the fear of a ride on red, coming out of Wheeler, you can't make a ride on red onto Bedford. But coming out of Wheeler in the other direction, you can make a ride on red. Uh, uh, up bit. But clearly, there're gonna be some pretty simple opportunities and they show in the report. I mean, there there are opportunities just through adjusting the timing and the cycling uh to to make, you know. In the teens through in the thirty percent increase in traffic throughput.
Yeah, good, yeah, let's do a level of service, right?
Yeah, so and and as you will see, um, this Synchro uh. Software is actually a modeling software and they'll show it. Uh, live, I think they were, are they gonna do it by Zoom or?
Yeah, they can do it by Zoom.
Yeah, I mean, they did it by Zoom, but they literally can say, okay. What happens if we change this timing to X at this light? And then begin it, and you see the cars coming, you see them turning, you know, these little images of cars, and it literally gives you a. Model report of what would happen if you made these changes.
Then do we have to talk to D O T and wait a year?
No, no, we're in charge of this, yeah, we do have to talk to Verdi.
We own that, we own the.
We, yeah.
Crosslights, even though we don't on the street, right?
Right, the the signals are out, we we do have to advise the county that we're making these adjustments, which is. Why you hire an engineering firm and you don't just go out there and start, you know, tweaking the timing. Um, so, but this will be a uh very streamlined.
Yeah, and it's a, I mean, I think it's gonna be great news for everybody, but also a great story that we can tell the community. But, um. I mean, the good news is the equipment we have out there is suited to the purpose, it might not be the. Level of tech if you were starting from scratch. You know, potentially bad news is they do not know whether some aspects of it, like the monitoring. Devices are actually working at all these locations.
Correct.
So, do we get that info from Verdi when the time comes?
Yes, that's right.
Why wouldn't they be working?
I mean, no reason to think they're not, other than there's a lot of stuff out there that is sensing when cars are present. And theoretically changes the cycle if cars are present. Partly so that you don't end up with a cycle when you don't need it. But, I mean, it's, as you no doubt have seen, and it's particularly true at this light, there are moments when. For reasons that elude me, literally only two cars get out of Wheeler before it turns red. And then other times, it doesn't seem to be a problem at all, so somehow the system is sensing something or failing to send something, but.
Yeah, and the timing may may be off, but um certainly this was the right thing to do, so we can. You know, and and again, we got to the point where we were calling the the traffic signal contractor at Verdi. And they were saying, listen, we don't, without an engineering report, we don't want to start tinkering with the timing. Uh, so, this is a big pattern.
It's a stack of data.
That's right.
Alright. Any other important item to discuss in the next three minutes before we? So, so all of these minor.
Are we in executive session now?
No, we're.
Okay, that's what I thought.
All all, we're we're live on Zoom. All all of these uh pay increases are within the budget.
That's right, yeah, uh, we increased pay for Panther Club employees. Um, and then some have raises because they're returning. Remember the after school programs, we pay higher rates to those um employees. Um, and that's, that's what we put within the higher uh hourly rates that we're seeing some of the appointments.
Then you will also see Resolution three thirteen, velocity bike ride. Alyssa has been the vortex of the velocity bike ride, this is a, what it's like, I guess. Potentially sixty mile ride or something all around.
Yes.
Um, but it comes through Pleasantville and they originally wanted to cut a cut up Roamer, use the high school parking lot as a. Rest station or drink water or whatever, and then continue. Uh, down past the end of the field, up into the country club and out onto N A. That uh idea really been problematic to begin with, the school did not feel comfortable with having that happen, so. They've switched horses, they're now just on the roadways, uh, but they go up Lake Street and. Uh, go to use the little piece of our pool parking lot as a waystation, the police say things like this have happened in the past, that hasn't been a problem, so. But there are potentially a whole bunch of bikers.
A lot of bikers.
Alright. It's seven fifty nine, we're ahead of schedule, we were behind schedule and now we've. We've caught up for you. We'll just wait till like six to eight o'clock. We like to be precise. It has done so. Alright, it's eight o'clock. Uh, welcome to the regular session of the Board of Trustees for the Village of Pleasantville. Uh, today is Monday, August twenty eight, if you are watching live on Monday, August twenty eight. Uh, we encourage you, if you are so inclined, to log in by Zoom, you can pick up. Uh, the Zoom links at Pleasantville dash N Y dot gov uh for our. Uh, current meeting as well as for future meetings and those of other boards and commissions. Uh, within a few days, uh, the recording of this meeting will be up and available for on demand. On demand webcast at P C T V seventy six dot org. Uh, we just finished a work session talking about various items uh that was preceded by an executive session on matters of real estate. Um, I had a couple of announcements to make and perhaps others uh do as well, let me get to my list of that. Eric, why don't you just give a very brief summary that you've already given to us about what's going on with the Manville Road project, which has been. Uh, we hope modestly delayed.
Yes, so um the contractor right now uh is obligated to have a certain percentage of the project. Subcontracted to uh D V E disadvantaged business entities. Uh, right now, uh, their subcontractor that they had lined up to do uh routine wall and curb in line, uh curb and sidewalk. Um, has backed out of the job, so right now they are. Uh, looking for a D V E subcontractor to do that work and at the same time has submitted to D O T a good fee. Waiver um uh through D O T that would essentially say. Uh, we understand it's difficult to find subcontractors, you may proceed uh without reaching this threshold, so. We're hoping to get an answer on that between the next one, two, maybe three weeks from uh D O T. And so, uh, once we get an answer on that, we'll have more information on the timing.
Alright, um, Con Edison is nearly finished with the gas connections with on Wheeler Avenue and around the corner onto Bedford?
Yes, they had to come back last week to do more work on a couple of the service line connections, you may have seen. Um, uh, some of the uh sell horses out there on Bedford Road, but. Um, they're almost fully done with that and then we're still waiting. Uh, their dates for repaving Wheeler Avenue and Bedford Road. Um, obviously, we've given them the dates of the uh community block party to absolutely avoid. Uh, but once we have those dates, we'll certainly.
So that's a complete mill and repave curb to curb.
Curb to curb.
All the way down Wheeler Avenue.
Yes.
Around the corner.
Yes.
Alright, well, that's a nice uh segue to Professor Block Party. Paul Alvarez, Saturday, September twenty three.
Yes, Saturday, September twenty third, we have, um. We are gonna have the resolutions today, actually, I think we're looking to pass. Um, we have at Washington Avenue, the event will be from one o'clock to six o'clock. Um, the road closure will start at eleven A M. And uh they'll go essentially till after, I think till seven P M on Washington Avenue. Uh, um, we plan on having a D J there, we're gonna have the car show again. And some vendors and then I'm working to see, um, to work along with the fire department to see if they can hopefully get something. We've got another event um for that day. On Wheeler Avenue, we will have, um, the event there is from three o'clock to eight o'clock. Um, that area is going to have a fun zone that's scheduled from three o'clock till about seven, that's gonna be free of charge. Um, we'll have at least three different, um. Three different games, like like Donny Castle and I think Last Year at the Teapots and something else, so we'll have that again, that'll be set up. Uh, in front of Frank and Joe's in that area, we'll have uh music in the middle. Um, of Wheeler, essentially in front of Village, the Poson Pizzeria, right in that area. Uh, I I maybe just a little, a little uh secret we're giving out, I believe that we may have. Michael Pepper playing with us.
It's possible, yeah, well, yeah, I think so.
So, he's one of our.
I don't know that, can we get, can we get a solid answer?
Oh, yeah, alright.
So, so we'll have live music.
With a with a friend, yeah.
Yeah.
At least a two man show, maybe, maybe more.
Maybe more, so we'll have um music there and then we'll have our vendors also in that area, so. Um, we're excited about it, we um, we've started already getting sponsors, so right now. Uh, we're still looking for sponsors for anyone, any businesses that are looking to get involved. Um, we will also be looking to get some volunteers, if anyone, I've had some people have reached out to us already. Um, but we'll have some people there helping out and just guiding everyone, and uh the one difference that. We are doing this year from from last year's event is that we've eliminated the beer garden that was. Over on the Bedford Road parking lot, uh, behind Holy Innocents. And now, um, I've asked my colleagues for us to essentially waive the open container law. Which will allow um any of the vendors that are licensed to sell uh beer, wine or cider. To have someone who buys that be able to be walking up and down the street on Wheeler Avenue, so that's the one. Major difference uh in this event, so we're looking forward to getting a lot more sponsors from our our chamber. Um, looking to get new members, we also, for the first time this year, we're allowing. Non-chamber members to join, they will have to pay a fee of a hundred dollars. But we're hoping that instead of doing that, they'll actually join because it's a hundred and fifty to join as a member, so it makes more sense to just do it that way. You get a free membership for the rest of the year and then this covers you for the following year, so we're hoping to get a lot more businesses. Um, that, you know, are looking to get involved with our village and showcase what we have, so we look forward to uh. Having everyone um show up and have a good time.
Great, thank you. Uh, our our neighbors at Pace University have a special event planned on Saturday, September nine. Sadly, I'm out of town, but let me encourage uh folks uh to attend, uh, two things going on, but. The uh Pace University football team is is playing that day. Uh, but at halftime. Uh, of the Pace football game on Saturday, September nine, halftime is probably around one fifteen P M. They're gonna have a recognition ceremony for the women's lacrosse team. Uh, the Pace Women's Lacrosse Team won the Division Two National Championship. Uh, to to anyone's knowledge, the first time any uh Westchester County school has ever won a national championship. Uh, a very big story, uh, that team was accorded a welcome at the White House by President Biden. Uh, a really pretty spectacular story, so uh that is Saturday, September nine, at halftime. Of the Pace Football Game, uh, the game starts at noon, the halftime is expected to be at one fifteen P M, so. Uh, anybody who's interested in sports in general and certainly uh 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 folks who are are interested in. Honoring this pretty spectacular achievement by the women's lacrosse team, uh, I encourage you to join that day at at Pace. Get back to my other list here, um.
I had announcements.
Go, go for it, yes.
Turn on my other hat, um, Billy is on to P C T V and P C T V will be hosting. Um, uh, an event, it's essentially considered the. Wait one second, I'll give you the exact dates, um, it's called End of the Summer Party. Um, it's on Sunday, September tenth. Um, it's called End of the Summer Party. Um, it's on Sunday, September tenth from two to five P M. The P C T V board of directors is thrilled to announce the first annual End of the Summer Party, Sunday, September tenth from two to five P M. It's a day of marking your calendar for an unforgettable event that will be at P C T V. We'll be showing our gorgeous grounds in the area and also um everything that we've done inside. Party will build with fantastic food, drinks, live music, incredible silent auction and raffle items and a wide array of fun activities for everyone to enjoy, whether you're looking to dance, stay away, mingle, meet fellow supporters or simply relax and soak in the atmosphere. There will be something for everyone at the fundraiser. While we've also um, we're going to be honoring uh Margaret Conzio for everything she's done for um the Village of Pleasantville. Um, if anyone is interested, the tickets are fifty dollars for adults. And for anyone for kids, it's twenty five dollars and they're less than, I believe, five, they are free. So we'd love to get the support of anyone to come out. Um, I think it'll be a good event just to showcase what P C T V has been doing. Um, they should starting today, their camp at P C T V um that they'll be having this week. Um, I think they have about nine campers over there, I think at least. So it'll be a good time to come see what's going on at P C T V. So, thank you.
Okay, thanks for that. Um. Uh, the uh County Executive's Office sent out a press release today, but it, it, it raises a point that we raised in the past and is worth raising again. And that is uh folks, as we approach the uh fall hurricane season and tropical storm season, should really give some consideration to being prepared for severe weather. Uh, I think there are plenty of resources out there. Uh, you don't have to work very hard on the web to get a lot of advice about it. But one particular piece the County Executive's uh office uh wanted to highlight is that critical importance of not trying to drive through standing water. Looks like you can get through and many times you can't. I, I can report, I think part of the genesis of this was that uh we had a uh a pretty sudden and severe rainstorm a couple of months ago. And there were literally dozens of cars on the screen up near the county medical center uh that tried to go through standing water and ended up trapped. Um, uh, it is really, really, really important uh uh to recognize that you don't know how deep it is. You don't know how your car will respond. And if you get partway through and uh lose power, especially in an environment where the water may be rising, uh, you have turned a problem into a crisis. So um, take a look, the county has the resources at the county uh website. There are plenty of other resources from FEMA, from the Red Cross, et cetera. But give some thought to what you would do if power is out, what you would do if, if uh uh who ended up trapped away from home. And it's a good opportunity to go to Pleasantville-ny.gov and in the left-hand column, uh click into signing up for Code Red, which is our emergency alert system. We don't use it for anything else except emergencies, but it is a means by which we can reach out to people if we have um information to uh impart about what's going on in the community. We uh certainly had this uh experience in Superstorm Sandy years back where it was very difficult to get to people. In many cases, their power was out. They didn't have landline telephones. Sometimes they had cell phones, but we didn't know what they were. You can sign up for emails. You can sign up for text messages, all kinds of ways to sign up. And I might also add, folks who are interested in the well-being of family members who live here can also sign up. So that uh the offspring of elderly parents uh who live here can uh keep an eye on what's going on and get, get updates uh even though they don't live here. So Pleasantville-ny.gov, left-hand column, Code Red. Worth pointing out, there's no doubt you have seen in the press right now, uh, the Gulf Coast of Florida and the Panhandle, and then perhaps Georgia, from the Carolinas are all uh mustering the resources to potentially deal with a hurricane there. Uh, blessedly, it does not look it's headed to us, but uh it is likely to be a busy hurricane season and it's really important uh to take a look at that. Um, while you're at it, the county also is uh pressing the point about the risk of lithium battery fires, which have been a significant issue in various places. Um, uh, any kind of lithium battery, but particularly bigger ones, scooters, hovercraft uh and the like are uh potential fire hazard. And if they start on fire, it is very difficult to put the fire out. So uh, New York City has had, I think, a hundred and seventy-five or more fires in circumstances where people had stored e-bikes in apartments, whatever. Uh, a fire starts and they have a whole lot of trouble putting them out. So if you have any kind of significant lithium batteries, just be careful, be aware where they are and don't keep them in the apps. See now, I've ended on a dark note. Anybody have another comment of any sort?
Um. Did you have one?
Um, well, I was gonna, it was sort of an awkward transition. But I just wanted to acknowledge that I feel like the new law that we passed banning gas powered leaf blowers um during the summer months has gone quite well during the first season. And I want to thank people who have adhered to the law. I've gotten a lot of comments about how much quieter it's been this summer.
And I, I've heard the same. I, I also, as you know, all of us have heard, uh, and in a couple of cases, I've interacted with folks who weren't violating it. Um, so, you know, it, it's not as though everybody's followed the rules and I don't want to suggest that everybody has, but um we're acting on it when we uh encounter it or hear of it. Uh, and at the moment, it's been uh uh more carrot than stick. Uh, but in the end, we do have a couple of, of uh landscape firms that have been recalcitrant.
And have been a little bit resistant.
We encourage them to, to follow.
Get on board. Yeah, I mean, I think that the residents really appreciate it because I, I, I knew from having done the research that the electric blowers were less loud, but it is dramatic how much, how much less noise they make. Um, I really appreciate the postcards that the village put together that summarizes the law. It has, it's in English on one side, Spanish on the other, and I find those to be a very tactful and non-confrontational way to let landscapers and homeowners know if they're not um adhering to the law. So I would encourage people to, to use those as well.
Now, I was just gonna point out, um, in September and October, two of our holidays, we're moving a couple of the new board meetings. So uh, board meeting scheduled for September twenty fifth has been moved to September twenty seventh in the senior center. And then board meeting scheduled for the evening of October ninth has been uh rescheduled to October eleventh.
Uh, in the senior center as well or?
Correct, yes, in the seniors.
And the one on the eleven is at, is, do we know if this one is gonna be at six or at seven?
Uh, work session at seven, regular meeting at.
Okay.
Possible, and as I said, it might come up, but not at the moment. Don't have that schedule.
Okay.
All right, so uh, our next regular meeting is on uh Monday, September eleven. Uh, and so uh between now and then, schools will have returned to session, be back up in gear. School and youth sports are up and running and uh the fall will be upon us.
School sports are already running.
They are.
They are.
Not competitive practice.
It's scrimmages.
Yeah. All right, anybody else? Further announcements, further comment? Is there any comments or question from anyone who might be watching? All right, with that, we have a raft of uh pretty straightforward resolutions, all two ninety. Let me share my screen.
That'll happen. Okay. Result that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the minutes of regular meeting held on August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh. That was the, our last meeting and uh chief, police chief Eric Grunster made his quarterly report. Uh, a, a long and detailed report with a bunch of really interesting uh pieces. So um, if that's a matter of great interest to you, we encourage you to watch the video. Uh, but uh you can also download from our website at Pleasantville-ny.gov his PowerPoint presentation. Is that up yet, Eric Newman? Or Alyssa? All right, so within the next few days, we'll put that on. All right, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, two ninety-one, Nicole.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments for fiscal year ending twenty twenty-four is listed below. Budget transfer of the general fund, four thousand three hundred and twenty dollars uh from finance full-time to finance software. Budget transfer of the water fund, two thousand one hundred and sixty dollars from water admin full-time to water admin software finance. Budget transfer of the refuse fund, seven hundred and twenty dollars from refuse full-time to refuse software finance. Uh, appropriate fund balance at the water fund, forty one thousand one hundred and forty one dollars um from water distribution outside service for emergency water repair Manville Road.
Is there a second?
Second.
So uh, the emergency water repair was that nighttime project that took place.
In front of the.
In front of the burns, replacing valves that turned out to be failing. Um. Uh, it may be that these are unrelated to the finance software, the finance software pieces may be unrelated to my question, but um. Uh, have, have we resolved the problem where folks could not query or pay?
Yes.
Taxes online?
Yes, so uh unrelated, but uh we had to upgrade our munis software, which is our uh uh finance software utilized by the village, also has a online payment um option. Uh, we had to do that in order to um utilize our water readings um uh equipment that we have. We'll order work on the old software. So uh, we are not the only municipality in that boat. Essentially, uh, every municipality that utilizes munis is.
Which is many.
Many. So um, Norine did a great job troubleshooting it. She turned into, if I'm Mr. HVAC, she's Mrs. IT. Um, and she had to work with Chase and munis, um, but was able to resolve the issue. Uh, this software is a new software. Uh, New York State is requiring that we um report uh software, uh the price of software as a fixed asset and uh.
Why is it a fixed asset?
Right.
It's a service.
Correct. Um, so that is quite a bit of work. Uh, and now a lot of municipalities are hiring vendors to help do that. Um, and so our finance department had made the request to outsource that uh to a third party, uh, which is what other smaller villages are doing. Um, so that's why we're moving the money and obviously it's general water and refuse.
So it's, I mean, we don't own this software. It's software as service, right? That's literally what they call it.
Yes, that, that, this is all.
If, if we bought the software package, I could see that being a fixed asset.
Yeah, it's a acquisition and lease of software. Um.
We're not even leasing it, are we? I mean, whatever.
Yeah.
We're tildying it with this. All right, thank you for that. Any other questions or comments?
Well, it's, it's forty thousand dollar repair is significant.
Yes, yeah.
What, what, what happened?
So we have a water valve.
So I had the impression it was a smaller.
Oh, no.
No, it was a big deal.
No.
In the middle of the night.
A big water valve under uh Manville Road, a um, a water valve from nineteen oh five, I believe it was from.
Not related to the replacement of the fire entrance and that was all.
But if, if you recall last year, um, the valve um uh at the corner of Wheeler and, and Manville, that valve failed too after we did work that valve. Um, so just so happened, we caught that one little up the street leaking as well, which is a good thing we did because at the end of the Manville Road project, when we repeat it.
Yeah.
Um, we won't have to go back and make it up to repair. But um, it was nighttime work to avoid uh issues with traffic and.
And it went on for a while. We had played this tree and it was a big deal. They had to dig far down. So.
Yes, correct.
It's a, it's, fo- folks, if you, if you happen to walk by these projects when the holes are open, um, it's, it's re- really quite interesting to realize how much infrastructure there is uh that has evolved over a very long time period. In many cases, although we know where things run, uh, one digs carefully because you run earth and uh related stuff. So. Uh, shout out to Anthony Carr, our superintendent, and John Litch, our water uh foreman, who is, has what thirty some odd years here and uh knows perhaps more than anyone else about what's under the street.
That's fair.
Well, speaking about the, the drainage in Memorial Plaza seems to be working as well. From the, from the drain.
Yeah, absolutely. All right.
Money well spent.
All in favor of two ninety-one? Aye. Aye, motion approved, Michael, two ninety-two.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract repayment of claims dated August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, covering check numbers one zero eight three five six to one zero eight four four five from the general fund, ninety four thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents. Special fund, one hundred and twenty-five dollars, water fund, fifty thousand three hundred and four dollars and eighty-four cents. Refuge fund, one thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixteen cents for a total of one hundred and forty-seven thousand twenty-four dollars and thirty-six cents. Payment claims in that.
Is there a second? Okay, comments or questions on the payment claims? All in favor? Aye, motion approved, back to Paul, two ninety-three.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the hiring of George Thomas, part-time village prosecutor effective August seventh, two thousand twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, George has been our prosecutor for a little while. Uh, he reached a retirement age, uh retired officially and returns to us on a part-time basis. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, two ninety-four, Nicole.
Whereas the Pleasantville Chamber of Commerce and the Village of Pleasantville scheduled to hold a community block party on September twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, rain date, Saturday, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, from one to nine P M on Washington Avenue and Wheeler Avenue. And whereas Washington Avenue from Edgewood Avenue to Manville Road shall be closed from eleven A M to seven P M. And Wheeler Avenue from Manville Road to Bedford Road shall be closed from one P M to nine P M. And whereas pending receipt of their temporary beer, wine and cider permit from the New York State Liquor Authority, local vendors will be selling alcohol, beer, wine and cider during the event within the defined area of Wheeler Avenue. And now therefore be it resolved that the village board permits the lifting of village code fifty-four dash for consumption in public spaces within the described area of Wheeler Avenue for this date only. Authorizes the village clerk to sign the New York State Liquor Authority's landlord consent form and issue an alcohol beverage permit. And be it further resolved that the police chief is authorized to post no parking signs during the dates and times noted in support of the event and is authorized to tow cars in violation of the temporary restrictions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, questions? All in favor? Aye, 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 motion approved. Two ninety-five.
Still voting. Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the hiring of the following part-time recreation assistants, job code zero two six nine. Kauru Morgan at a rate of twenty-two dollars an hour. Um, effective, all these are effective August twenty-fifth for Panther Club, A seven three three zero dot one oh one, Gregerto the goalie, uh, the same program, same rates, twenty-two dollars an hour. Ray Spanda, same rate, same program, Emman Sophia, same rate, same program.
Is there a second?
Aye.
Welcome to all of those. Uh, in work session, we talked to Mike Newman, uh, uh, up and running, uh, ready, ready to go with Panther Club. Um, uh, it's been fully subscribed. We do have a waiting list and we try to work through that in the course of the weeks and months to come, but we welcome these four new folks as Panther Club employees. All in favor? Aye, aye, motion approved, two ninety-six. Back to you, Paul.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the hiring of Tucker Thomas, court attendant, effective August twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-three, at the hourly rate of twenty-one dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, Nicole, two ninety-seven.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the hourly rate increase for the following recreation assistance uh for Panther Club effective August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, Sabrina Bussid um from twenty, uh, an hourly rate of twenty dollars to twenty-two dollars. Luke Bryan, uh, same from an hourly rate of twenty to twenty-two. Roy Emlet, also from twenty dollars an hour to twenty-two. Rene Friedman from twenty-one dollars an hour to twenty-three dollars an hour. Daisy Haywood from twenty dollars an hour to twenty-two. Kaylee Edie from twenty dollars an hour to twenty-two. Anita Levine from twenty-one to twenty-three. Ian Mullin from twenty to twenty-two. Phil Salamon from twenty-one to twenty-three. Harbin Syed from twenty fifty an hour to twenty-two fifty an hour. And Kelsey Tiffany from twenty dollars an hour to twenty-two dollars an hour.
Is there a second?
Hmm.
Second, please reflect mostly seniority.
Correct.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, Michael, two ninety-eight.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorize the pay rate increase for the following part-time available recreation assistant after-school programs. Uh, Gene Borden from fifty dollars increased to fifty-five dollars. Anna Frangulis from fifty dollars, fifty-five dollars. Elena Garcia, fifty to fifty-five dollars. Jared Garcia from fifty to fifty-five dollars. Tina Ayanati from fifty to fifty-five dollars. Thomas McCucci from fifty to thirty-five dollars. Marie, Mary Ann Olbermann from fifty to fifty-five dollars. Marley Pitcher from fifty to fifty-five dollars. Heather Scovera from fifteen to fifty-five. Donna Spodnik from fifty fifty-five. Francesca Varga from fifty fifty-five. Valerie Webkey from fifty to fifty-five. All under the same budget code, um, A seven three two four dot one oh one. We also have Maggie Flanagan. We also have Maggie Flanagan, uh, increase from thirteen dollars and twenty five cents to twenty dollars an hour. Henry Mancini, increase from eleven dollars to fifteen dollars an hour. Alexandra Samsoda. Um, at an hourly rate of fifty five dollars an hour and Bailey Rogers at an hourly rate of thirty five dollars an hour.
Is there a second?
Second.
These are folks that teach after school classes.
That's right. Uh, these increases were built into the budget. Um, I budgeted for. But yes, after school programs.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi, motion approved, two ninety nine, back to Paul.
Result of the board trustees hereby authorizes new hire Brian Gazer, part-time available. Recreation assistant for the after-school programs. Eight, seven, three, two, four. Dot one oh one and hourly rate of fifty five dollars per hour effective September eighteenth, two thousand twenty three.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi, motion approved, three hundred, Nicole.
Result of the board of trustees hereby authorizes a pay rate increase for the following part-time available. Recreation assistance, special events effective September fifteenth, twenty twenty three. Maggie Flanagan, from twenty dollars an hour. Uh, what's the increase?
Uh, two twenty dollars.
Okay, two twenty dollars an hour from uh Henry Mancini to fifteen dollars an hour.
Is there a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi, motion approved, three oh one, Michael.
Didn't you just approve the same people?
Yeah.
It's, these are different categories.
Okay. Different categories, alright. Uh, so now we're on three oh.
Some, some of the same folks, yeah, used in various categories.
Okay.
Yes.
And here they are again, three oh one. Result of the board trustees hereby authorizes a pay rate increase for the following part-time available recreation assistant adult programs. Effective September fifteenth, twenty twenty three, Megan Flanagan, at a rate of twenty dollars an hour. And Henry Mancini at a rate of fifteen dollars an hour.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi, motion approved, three oh two. Paul.
Result of the board trustee hereby accepts the resignation of Mary Ann Tiffany. Recreation assistant Panther Club effective August twenty first, twenty twenty three.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi, motion approved, three oh three, Nicole.
Result of the board of trustees hereby approves Tuesday, March nineteenth, twenty twenty four, as the official date for the twenty twenty four Village of Pleasantville election.
Is there a second?
Second.
So Tuesday, March nineteenth is an election, uh, three positions. Uh, David, Michael, and my position are up for election next year. All in favor?
Aye.
Hi, motion approved, three oh four.
Whereas in support of the community block party being organized by the Pleasantville Chamber of Commerce on September twenty third, twenty twenty three. With a rain date of September thirtieth, twenty twenty three. Certain no parking regulations on Edgewood Avenue will be required to enable fire department apparatus to respond to emergencies without the ability to utilize portions of Washington Avenue. Now therefore be it resolved that the board of trustees hereby authorizes temporary no parking regulations on September twenty third, twenty twenty three. For the rain date of September thirtieth, twenty twenty three. From twelve to six P M on both sides of Edgewood Avenue, from Washington Avenue to Grove Street. And on the north side of Edgewood Avenue, from Grove Street to Mandville Road. Um, be it further resolved, the police chief is authorized to post no parking signs for the dates and times noted in support of the event. And is authorized to tow cars in violation of the temporary restrictions.
Is there a second?
Second.
So that's similar to what we did last year and those neighbors were aware of it, but we make them aware of it this year.
That's correct. We're, we're gonna be uh getting notifications out to all those homeowners and all the businesses out here.
Okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Hi, motion approved. Three oh five, Paul.
Result of the board trustees hereby authorizes village clerk to advertise for January first, two thousand twenty four, December thirty first, two thousand twenty six.
To, should, should, should read, I guess, to advertise. For bids for sidewalk and curb approvals.
Right.
Okay, uh, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi, motion approved, three oh six, we're ripping through this.
Where, whereas the Village of Pleasantville Board of Trustees desires to effectuate and implement certain amendments governing parking prohibitions within village boundaries. And whereas the local law amending paragraph one seventy three dash sixty three of the village code. Was introduced to the village board of trustees on August twenty, twenty twenty three. And whereas the proposed action is a type two action pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, C T R. And no further environmental review is required. And whereas the village board of trustees is fully familiar with the proposed local law. Now therefore be it resolved that the village board of trustees of the Village of Pleasantville will hold a public hearing on September eleventh, twenty twenty three. At eight P M at Village Hall, eighty Wheeler Avenue, Pleasantville, New York. And via video conference with respect to a local law amending paragraph one twenty three dash sixty three of the village code. Which public hearing will include opportunities for interested members of the public to provide written and oral comments on the proposed local law.
Is there a second?
Second.
That proposed local law would prohibit uh. Parking on the south side of Mandville Road near the intersection with Red Oak Lane during certain hours in order to improve the visibility to crosswalk?
Uh, and the crossing guard, yeah, and those hours uh essentially aligned with uh school drop off.
Okay, so just a minor correction in the resolution title. It says to prohibit no parking. It, it should be to prohibit parking. See that?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh. And, and how is that for an effective government? We're gonna both effectuate and implement. In a single bolus from the, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, three oh seven.
Well, effectuating. Three oh seven, result of the board of trustees hereby approve the request from the Pleasantville Day Committee to close Memorial Plaza for the Pleasantville Day. Celebrations on Saturday, May eighteen, twenty twenty four, from six A M to four P M. And further resolved, the board of trustees authorized the police chief to post no parking signs effective Saturday, May eighteen, twenty twenty three. And to tow twenty four, yep, and to tow all vehicles in violation of this temporary parking restriction.
Is there a second?
Second.
So awfully early to be getting ahead of this, but there are a whole bunch of enterprises that have to plan their schedules around it, including. Uh, folks at school, the art committee, da 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 da.
Vendors.
Uh, vendors. So Saturday, May eighteen, twenty twenty four, mark your calendars for P-Ville Day, all in favor?
Aye.
Hi. Motion approved. Three oh eight, Paul.
Result of the board trustees hereby approves the appointment of Jeffrey Ocello to the Village Pleasantville Police Department as a community service worker. Child class one thirty eight dash zero one, C S E B, wage schedule B, step one, annual salary of forty nine thousand eight three. Effective August twenty ninth, two thousand twenty three, set appointment subject to probationary period. Not less than twelve weeks or maximum of fifty two weeks.
Is there a second?
Second.
Very good news?
Very good news, yes. Um, civil service, uh, delay this appointment because they, uh, we had our uh community service worker. Looking for a full-time uh public safety job. And then civil service announced that the test was gonna, uh, test for the position was gonna be given. So we really couldn't appoint someone uh in the interim. So we finally um have someone. They previously worked in the parks department as a seasonal employee with um higher regards, so we're excited to get him uh, get him out and working.
Great. Community service workers are category, various responsibilities, the key one being parking enforcement.
Correct.
Uh, also uh coverage for uh crossing guards on occasion and various other activities. Welcome Jeffrey Ocello, all in favor?
Aye.
Hi. Motion approved. Tomorrow.
That's right, tomorrow.
Uh, Nicole.
Sorry. Uh, result that the board of trustees hereby approves the request from Amy Marlowe, sixty five Sunnyside Avenue, to hold a block party. And thereby close Sunnyside Avenue from, Sunnyside Avenue from three to eight P M.
Is there a second?
On what day?
September ninth.
On September ninth.
And what we include in that resolution between Bedford and whatever, do we need to? So forty nine is the corner of Clinton.
Yeah.
To one fifteen, which is probably north place.
No, I have that according.
Right? All right, as amended.
Who needs a map? I'm just gonna walk around with you.
Well, I used to live at forty nine Sunnyside, so it's, it's not hard to remember.
I shouldn't give you a quiz of every street.
I couldn't do that on every street. I could do it on Sunnyside. All in favor? Hi, motion approved. Uh, one, uh, three ten, Michael.
Three ten. There are a lot of signatures on that. That's a big, that's a big party.
It is, yeah. There's a long history of social activity, Sunnyside Avenue. I mean, you got to, it's called Sunnyside.
That's right.
Pleasantville.
It's a great street.
Do I need a cabaret license?
Result of the board of trustees hereby authorizes Pleasantville Community Television to hold an end of summer party at Two Lakes Street from two to five P M. On September tenth, twenty twenty three. And further resolved, the board trustees authorize the police chief to post no parking signs effective September tenth, twenty twenty three on Orbitac Lane. As tow all vehicles in violation of this temporary parking restriction.
Is there a second?
Second.
Aim here is to avoid having an impact on the folks across the street.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi, motion approved, three eleven, Paul.
Result of the board trustees hereby authorizes a title change from part-time. Permanent to part-time available for Daisy Haywood.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi, motion approved, three twelve, Nicole.
Result that the board of trustees. Authorizes, there's a typo, the police chief Eric Gretzner to attend the law enforcement seminar on antisemitism in Israel. From October fifth, twenty twenty three to October thirteenth, twenty twenty three. First. Further resolved that the board of trustees authorizes. The police chief Eric, Eric Gretzner to attend the I A C P twenty twenty three annual conference and exposition. Scheduled from October fourteenth, twenty twenty three to October eighteenth, twenty twenty three in San Diego, California.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
So the, the good news on that is that uh, the cost of flights, lodging, and meals to the trip to Israel are covered. Uh, by the Israeli Ministry of Diaspora, Diaspora and Antisemitism. Um, let me just read the chief's notes about this. Um. Uh, this year, the seminar runs from October five to October thirteen and will identify successful Israeli practices to combat terrorism. Counterterrorism experts will share their in-depth understanding of the motivations, characteristics, and ideologies, da 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 da. Um, I believe the seminar will be beneficial, uh, continuing our very successful partnership with our Jewish community here in Pleasantville. Additionally, the cost of all flights, lodging, and meals are covered, so. Uh, happy to think that uh he will be gaining that experience and appreciate the support from the Israeli government. I can report having. Uh, sat in on a webinar uh regarding. Uh, the painful increase in antisemitic acts in the country in recent years, uh, that um, it's a timely subject, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Hi, motion approved, three thirteen. Michael.
Result that on behalf of the Columbia Herbert Irving Conference's Panther Center, the board of trustees hereby authorize the velocity cycling event on Sunday, October eighth, twenty twenty three. For approximately ten A M until three thirty P M.
Is there a second?
Second, but where is?
Where? So, uh, Alyssa can report the, the path. Essentially, it's a group of, it's a, what, a very long bike ride, sixty or more.
Yeah, so it's starting at. Their center in purchase.
Uh huh.
And they're coming all the way up, going down Nantahigan into, I guess, Mount Pleasant. And then they're working their way back.
Right, so they're gonna head up Lake Street and use our pool parking lot as a possible.
We're gonna reserve some spaces for rest area.
So anyway, it's all on the streets. The police report that events of this kind have been uh worked out fine in the past. We're not responsible for it in any, in any way. And the bikers, as you can imagine, on a very, very long bike race, they're not all in a pack. They get scattered.
By the time they get here, they're gonna be very far between. They're all gonna be scattered now.
Correct. So, uh, a charity event for, for Columbia's Herbert Irving Conference Care Center, all in favor?
Aye.
Hi, motion approved, three fourteen, Paul.
Oh, wow. Whereas the village. Whereas the village board of the Village of Pleasantville has been notified that the indoor heads for heating, ventilation, air conditioning. HVAC system in village hall that provides heating and cooling in village's building department. And the police department, which provides heating and cooling for the control room. Servers and other vital public safety infrastructure has failed and must be repaired and or replaced as soon as possible. And whereas without functioning indoor heads, temperature in the village hall can become too hot or too cold. Severely damaging the equipment necessary to maintain systems that are required to operate the village's public safety and government services. Including but not limited to equipped, which is necessary for responding to police, fire, and medical emergencies. Communicating with the public regarding emergency situations and providing general information. You know, providing general assistance to members of the public and responding to other unforeseen circumstances. And whereas it is necessary to expedite the repair and or replacement of the indoor heads of an emergency basis. In order to maintain the heating and the cooling systems of village halls, so that the village communication and internet services remain continuously functional. And whereas the village has obtained the scope of work needed to repair and or replace indoor heads. Now therefore be resolved that according to the provisions of the General Municipal Law, section one oh three. Prentices for the village board. Of the Village of Pleasantville hereby finds and determines that a public emergency exists. We respect the need to repair the indoor heads of the HVAC system. The village hall that provides heating and cooling to the village department. And the police department, and which provides heating and cooling for the village's control room and servers. And that without such repairs, there could be severe damage to equipment necessary to provide public safety. And to maintain systems that are required to operate the village's public safety and government services. Be it further resolved, the village board of the Village of Pleasantville hereby determines that the costs. To design and implement the repair and or replacement of indoor heads are necessary to preserve the village's property. And ensure the health and safety of the residents of Village of Pleasantville. Be further resolved that the village board hereby authorizes expenditure of funds not to exceed fifty thousand dollars from the general fund. To repair and or replace the indoor heads of the village hall HVAC system. And be it further resolved that the mayor of the Village of Pleasantville and the village administrator of the Village of Pleasantville. Are hereby authorized to enter into contact with one or more vendors for the repair and or replacement of the indoor heads. For the village's HVAC system at the collective cost not to exceed fifty thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
So that is many paragraphs as required to demonstrate. Uh, why we are violating our normal purchasing uh and bidding requirements for projects that may cost as much as fifty thousand?
That's right. And, and with that said, we did due diligence to verify that is a, a fair reason with us.
There you have it. All in favor?
Aye.
Hi, motion approved, three fifteen, Nicole.
Result of the village board of trustees hereby accepts the donation of up to four flower, flower planters by Pleasantville LLC. To be placed and maintained in the village right of way by village employees.
Is there a second?
Second.
We appreciate this. Uh, uh, we're going to have some planters uh in the crosswalks near Seven Memorial. Uh, donation. To the Village of Pleasantville and they will henceforth be owned and maintained by us. Very much appreciate that gift. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, three sixteen, Michael.
So those are not the four that are already there?
They are not. No, those are the property of Seven Memorial and those are interestingly irrigated from all over.
Yes, yeah.
So, sorry. These are the ones that are gonna go out in the bump out by the crosswalk. All right, three sixteen, wait.
Result of the board of trustees hereby approves the hiring of David Henkin, school crossing guard job code one forty one, with the hourly rate of twenty two dollars. With an effective date of September fifth, twenty twenty three. Set appointment is pending a success background check and subject to a probationary period of not less than twelve weeks to a maximum of fifty two weeks.
Is there a second?
Second.
Don Henkin.
Yeah.
Longtime village resident.
That's right.
Father of our former police officer.
Sounds great.
Welcome, sir. Glad to have you. All in favor?
Much appreciated.
Hi.
Aye.
Motion approved, three seventeen, Paul.
Result of the board trustees hereby approves the waiving of a cabaret license for the purpose of a one-day event, Pleasantville Chamber of Commerce Block Party. On September twenty third, twenty twenty three, with a rain date of September thirty, twenty twenty three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Pretty straightforward. All in favor?
Aye.
Hi, motion approved, three eighteen. Uh, good news.
Result of the board of trustees hereby waives the third day requirement for a liquor license for Crawdaddy's Creole Kitchen, sixty eight Wheeler Avenue.
Is there a second? Second. As is often the case, the village has the right to require a thirty-day waiting period before progress is made on a liquor license. Uh, through the state liquor authority. Uh, no reason to do that. And uh, we're happy to report that the. Former steakhouse at sixty eight Wheeler, right next to Frank and Joe's, uh, is gonna turn into Crawdaddy's Creole Kitchen. Welcome Crawdaddy. Crawdaddy's, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. That's the last of our uh agenda items. Is there any comment from? Uh, just stop sharing the screen. Comment from any member of the public? Raise your hand if anyone is there with a question. There being none, any further comments from any of us? Last minute announcements? All right.
Move to return to executive session?
We do. Uh, is there a motion to return to executive session? Uh, for various matters, including written estate. We do. Is there a motion to return to executive session for various matters, including rent, estate, and personnel?
So rude.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, thank you all. We will see you on Monday, September eleven, between now and then. Have a great Labor Day weekend. Have a great end of the summer and beginning of the fall. We'll see you soon.